Okay, so we are now recording. I want to thank everybody for joining us for our first monthly Team Gogi Women Town Hall. Woo woo! So, we're gonna go ahead and we'll get started. I have a little PowerPoint. If anybody can't see my screen, please let me know. But a quick overview of the agenda for the beginning part, because obviously I did not complete this agenda, I just realized. So, we have a special guest speaker who is an ex lifer and Gogi leader, James Solis. So, James is gonna go ahead and talk to us a little bit. Just as a quick overview, in the How To Gogi book, if you look on page 223, he has, James drew the coat of arms, that's on page 223, and he's featured on pages 223 to 225. And on page 225, I'll just let you guys see these. Okay, this is the color versions. I weaseled them out of Coach Taylor's.
Wow.
Yeah, I got copies from her. So, this is the color version of the Gogi coat of arms.
That's beautiful.
And if you guys want to know what every part of this symbolizes, go in and read pages 223 to 225, and James explains it. Now, this one, I love the coat of arms, but I'm all into butterflies and purple, so I really love this one. This is the one that's on page 225.
Oh, I love that.
Is that BA or what? And look at, look at, do you see the cocoon? Oh, I love the cocoon!
Yeah.
Yes, getting ready to bloom and all the detail and everything. And that's, that looks like it's probably James when he actually had hair. Wow, that was a long time ago.
Ooh, dang!
Listen to the guests!
They do beautiful work.
Yes, he does. And, and don't you know, as soon as I saw these, you know girlfriend was all up on him about doing art for us, but he is a very, very busy man. So, you know, I'm still working that angle, but don't hold your breath. Okay, so I do have a list of questions that I have that I will be asking James, and then after we're done, any questions that you ladies have that weren't asked or answered, please feel free to, um, to speak up. And then after that, um, if we have time, because James is long-winded, uh, we'll move into some of the other updates we have. So, thank you, James, for blessing us with your presence. Um, I know you're a very busy man, so first of all, congratulations. We're very happy to hear that you're out. And, um, I did ask earlier, and please tell me again where you paroled from?
The Lionel State Prison Level 2 GPR.
Okay. And what level did you start?
I started at Level 4. Um, I actually was in New Folsom, and, and back then, it was heavily populated with the Mexican mafia and you, you white supremacists, you know, everything. Um, it was pretty bad.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, when, um, let's ask, when did you go in?
I, I went in in, uh, 1987.
Wow.
In early, in early March.
Early March, so I was 87. I was 17. Wow, okay, that's a long time ago.
87.
I know, right? I know, I know, I'm old, thanks. Okay, so, so when did you parole, James?
I paroled, uh, January 26, 2012.
2012. So, anybody want to do some quick math? How long were you in? 20?
Close to, it was 20, 24 short from actually 25 years.
Okay, wow.
You made it!
Yeah, you made it. Okay, so we asked that you were inside, um, almost 25 years. So, when did you first hear about Gogi?
Uh, actually, uh, I was actually in CMC West, and, um, Coach was actually in CMC East, and she was also doing CMC West. And they, they had this program called PGS, which is, um, programs, uh, actually, for games, been so long, programs, something, group services, right? And basically, they run so many, so many programs, and they were trying to kind of bring in Gogi, but it, it was more heavier on the east side than it was on the west side, as far as the two prisons. And when I heard Coach's, uh, speech, it, it took me by surprise, because I've been through many groups, many different workshops, and when she just started talking about the neurological wedge, how you could just change your thinking, the way you feel, the way you believe, and just getting internal freedom, I was, I was kind of hooked. And she started about creating new habits. And whether you guys believe it or not, back then, the curriculum was very minimal. It was just 12 pages, and I mean, there was only like six steps compared to today. Yeah, so she, she, she basically talked about that the brain is one of the most powerful tools, as we always hear, and who's, who's basically the boss of your brain? You, or your environments, your influences, or your circumstances? Who is really the boss of your brain? Another thing that took me by surprise is, she talked about, have you guys ever heard the story about the, the bumblebee? Has anybody heard the story about the bumblebee?
No.
So, so she uses this as a metaphor, and she started telling most inmates that, you know, she shared her story, and she started talking about how many, you know, authorities, figures, they look at it, once a criminal, always a criminal, they're never gonna change, and it's just best to lock them up and let them rot to death, right? And in this time, you have a lot of governors, like Pete Wilson, that says, the only way you're gonna parole is in a pine box, right? So, she spoke out on all this, and she basically said that, you know, scientists have proven that it is impossible for a bumblebee to fly due to its, its short, little wings, and its heavy big body, it is impossible for it to take flight and gravitate and just take flight in the air. And she started using this as an example, and she started getting further into detail saying, but however, the bumblebee defies science, and if it takes that bumblebee to just take off running as hard as it can and flapping its wings as fast as it can, it defy science in their face and shows them that they can't fly. So, just like the bumblebee, we too have to believe and defy what the statistics say, what the authority figures say, that we're never gonna get out and be a model citizen in society. And I think, in a sense, I am one of those examples, and I have a lot of other lifer brothers that are examples. They just had a lifer barbecue that happened this Saturday, and you, it started off with Doc Miller, uh, he led like maybe three lifers, now it's over, wow, in the thousands. They have so many free lifers, it's incredible. So, that itself is, that itself is the bumblebee story that, yes, we can.
Yes, we can. That's awesome. So, what year was that?
Uh, as far, as far as this, let me see, ooh, this is back, this is back like 90, 97.
Okay, so you were in about 10 years.
Uh, 97, I, yeah, around 10.
Okay. Okay, so, your first reaction then, your initial reaction was a positive one, correct?
Well, you know, when you go in front of the parole board, they, and at that time, I hadn't went, I had to do 18 years before I went in front of the parole board, but I heard a lot of lifers, what they had to experience. And they kept telling me, preparing me, they said, what happened, why did it happen, and how could you prevent it? And not only that, you, you know, when the, the judge slams the hammer, and he's giving you a license, and you're witnessing your, excuse me, your family crying, it, it really, it really takes a toll on you. So, what I'm trying to say is, you know, I get a little emotional, because I, I, it's still as clear as yesterday. It's so real, it's unbelievable, and you ask yourself, how did I end up here? Why did this happen? And you go through this, this journey, just like the cocoon that you see, the metamorphosis stage is taking place, you don't even know it, you're in this deep struggle, this fight, the demon, the devil, uh, the angels, and you're, you're going through this struggle trying to figure things out. Why was I dealt a bad hand in life? Why? I felt I was always a good person. Why do these things happen to me? So, from going to church, going to all these programs, trying to soul-search, why am I the way I am, and why am I in these current circumstances? So, I lead to say, I say this all to say that, when Coach spoke, it really took me by surprise, and I, and I, I just took a liking to everything she said. Uh, it was during one of the, um, um, gay, uh, gay members and criminals anonymous, CGA, and we're doing a celebration, she was our, one of our guests, and actually, I was one of the second speakers, and when I spoke, she came up to me and she told me, "James, you speak from your heart. I love what you have to say." And I was speechless, because I was intimidated. This is a woman with a PH, PhD, you know, a master's, and she has all this formal education, she just like, she's up there, and I'm like, wow, I was like, very intimidated. And she says, "What's wrong, James? You were speaking well there." And I said, well, and I told her exactly what I'm telling you guys. And she turns around and says, "Here," she signed my book, and she says, "Um, the degree that you lived is your degree in life." And she goes, "You don't need, you don't need a certificate, you don't need a diploma, you don't need a license. You have lived it, and that alone marks who you are and how you could help others." So, I, I was like, damn, this lady is very nice, and I was like, like, I, I want to be involved. I've never, I've never felt, you could just feel Coach Taylor's positive energy, and how she just captures and cultivates the whole audience, and how she just draws all these people, and everybody just feels the love that she has to give, and everybody wants a piece of that. It's almost like she's the queen bee, and everybody wants a piece of that honey. Yeah.
She's pretty hot down there.
She was very beautiful. She was pretty hot, too. Yeah. She looked like she does in the books back then.
Okay. So, how do you feel then, Gogi helped you?
Well, well, for me, it was, uh, actually starting new habits, because I was more of a, I was trying to do positive, but the, considering the circumstances, all the violence in prison, the politics, and even the politics of CDCR within the officers, it was very hard to stay positive. The circumstances, the influences, uh, your atmosphere, everything was, was taking an effect, and therefore, it was very hard to think positive, because it seemed, if there wasn't one thing, it was another. And for the Southern Hispanics, it was really hard, because we were always locked down for any given thing. They find a knife on the yard, we're locked down. Someone drops a kite, we're locked down. Someone gets stabbed, we're locked down. Even, we couldn't even see, my family, on several occasions, they flew way over from Los Angeles to New Folsom, to, uh, to Corcoran, oh, Corcoran, you name it, and I had to visit them through a glass window, right? When I am general population, and I should have the freedom to do so, but considering they're talking about it's a safety hazard and all this other stuff because of the current events. Um, yeah, so, the influence is very hard to stay positive, but with Gogi, it was, it was easier, because I had to be the boss of my brain, I had to start creating new habits, and even to the point that some of the inmates were saying, "Hey, you know what? You're brainwashed. You're brainwashing your thoughts, that's not gonna work." Oh, I sound like McWash.
Yeah, you sound kind of washing out a little bit there. Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, the people used to say that I was, I was getting brainwashed, and I just basically, from my mind, was very filthy that I needed that cleansing. I needed to be brainwashed, and this stuff's really working in my life.
That's good.
I mean, I mean, from the positive, uh, positive, uh, words, thoughts, actions, uh, from the five, uh, second light switch, to being the boss of your brain, I mean, all the, all these, all these tools are, are very effective if you act in the right way.
Okay, so that kind of leads me to the next question then. How can, um, help, help us understand how Gogi can help the men that are inside, help our loved ones?
Well, prime example, like I said, the, the influences are very crucial, and, I mean, come on, guys, let's, 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 let's keep it real. You know, it's, it's not a, it's not a walk, you know, walk in the park sometimes. Any given thing could happen at any given moment, and then they're put in a predicament, whether they're, it's a catch-22, they're damned if they do, and they're damned if they don't. But I, I could testify, and I could, uh, be a leading example, that at times, I was put in those catch-22s, and I said, "You know what? Did someone fart right now?"
No. That was like a car or something.
Okay, alright.
Sounds like it's coming from your end. Is that a car or something?
Okay, I, I don't know, you know, but that just didn't sound like...
Okay, remember that this is being recorded, people. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
So, going back to what I was telling you is, catch-22 is no joke, and this is where you could make the difference. You could either be a follower, or, or you could be a leader. And this is where Coach, through her letters, was trying to tell me, you can change. And I, and I was telling her, "Oh, you don't understand politics." She says, "Yes, you can." And, and she believed more in me than I believed in myself. And eventually, getting involved as, as far as being a Gogi warrior, being, and being involved doing, uh, trying to promote some groups, uh, doing actually the curriculum, it did change my way of thinking. And I did do, uh, different things, that other people started seeing the difference, and they started asking me questions, "How, how are you able to do this?" So, for you men that are locked up, guys, uh, and when I say guys, I mean girls, you know what? Uh, there is an answer. But the thing is, you know, if they have a dream, and they don't work towards it, and then they're never gonna achieve that. But if they could see it, they could believe it, and if they could actually have that vision, they actually make it come true. But if they let someone else make their own dream come true, it's not gonna happen. They're gonna fall short from that dream. So, your dream's only gonna happen if you're actually putting what you need to do, the steps forward to make it happen. I, I noticed that a lot of lifers, when I was incarcerated, were not working on themselves. They were doing the politics, they were playing basketball, they're playing dominoes, they're watching TV, you know, they were talking on their cell phones, they were doing all this stuff that could get them basically in trouble. Why dominoes, uh, and games and all this? Because during that time, it's good to do some recreational stuff, but at the same time, they were not educating themselves. I took the time that I was incarcerated as a time, like being in college. I opened a lot of books, I did a lot of stuff. Till this day, till this day, I, I'm doing some of the things that I was doing in there. Uh, one of the things that I was doing in there was facilitating, uh, the substance abuse program. I was facilitating, um, you could just imagine, just about every type of life of walk inmates, and I'm doing that today out here. I'm a substance abuse counselor, and I'm doing what I was doing in there, and I even got my certification while I was in there. And, I mean, it was a blessing in disguise, and I, and, and actually, it's like, it's amazing how all these doors slowly but surely started opening up. I didn't see the purpose behind it, but once, once I went in front of the parole board, it all started making sense, guys. So, I encourage you to encourage your men. If they love you, they'll learn to love themselves, and you love Gogi, encourage them to love Gogi as well. Because they might not get the aha moment right there and then, but work it with them, and surely but slowly, it's like watering a plant, they'll come to, you know what I mean? And hopefully, they get the aha moment, and hopefully, they'll be influenced by positive influences and not negative. Sorry about that.
Yeah, so that, so that kind of leads then to the other, the next question I had was, you know, if you think it's beneficial, um, if it's beneficial to the, to our loved ones, when we learn with them, when we learn Gogi with them, does it benefit them? And, and if so, why does it benefit them?
Okay.
Just kind of restate what you said, I mean...
Okay, so in this one, I'll use, uh, another one that Coach used that got me. She says, and this has to do something with the eagle, right?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, so first, we start off with the turkeys. What do turkeys do? Turkeys come in a, in a crowd, right? In a bunch of turkeys, and you got one, and it, and it's just like the blind leading the blind, one turkey, woo, and there's, all the rest are just following them, dragging their feathers. And, I, it, a turkey, you're gullible, you're gonna believe whatever, and, and basically, you're not the leader, you're gonna follow the other turkeys. And that's, in a sense, she told me, with Gogi, by being the base of, the boss of your brain, right, creating new habits, and anytime you have a negative thought, anytime you have a negative feeling, or you're thinking about doing negative things, you put that neurological wedge and create a new habit. And the same thing is, instead of hanging out with the turkeys, woo, it's better to hang out with the eagles. And why the eagles? Because once you start hanging out with the eagle, once you start hanging out with the eagles, you're able to spread your wings and soar wherever your heart desires. And it was so hard to learn that. But when I started flying, I loved it, and I only wish I did it sooner. But it was so blind, because I was always the blind. So, it was the blind leading the blind, so to speak. So, with Gogi, it could be very beneficial, but it's just a book, it's just pages, it's just letters written, if it's not applied. And believe me, when they go in front of the parole board, if they're lifers, the parole board asks them certain questions, and if they're not a, a, answering them, because they don't know them, and the parole board's gonna know they're not doing their work that they need to. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Okay, so then, would you also then agree that Gogi, and having Gogi by itself is, is, is very strengthening for relationships and whatever, because it makes somebody a better person? Um, and when we study Gogi with our loved one, then, um, it would be only natural that it would strengthen whatever our relationship is with that loved one, whether, you know, it be a marriage, whether it be a relationship with a mother and son, or whatever it is, it seems that people tend to, people gravitate closer to somebody that's willing to take an interest in what it is that they're doing, um, is what I've seen, especially when somebody's inside. Um, so, do you agree that this is something that could actually strengthen relationships and marriages while they're in, as well as while they're out, you know, once they get out?
It takes two to make it right. It just can't be one pulling all the weight. You gotta have two captains on board. If one side of the ship is only Gogi, the other side is kind of sinking, and eventually, the ship's either gonna tilt side, or it's gonna break in half and just collapse. Yes, it's very important that both are fully involved. If they're not involved, and then the ship doesn't really have a purpose or guidance as far as going in the right direction. Um, so, Gogi, I, I do truly believe that by both studying and having a, studying for Gogi, the, the material and everything, and applying, talking about it, letting it be part of their life, living the way, you know, Gogi teaches us, and then it just becomes a part of us. It becomes a new habit, a new pattern, a new way of life, and a new beginning. And this, and this is how you guys could even have a Googie, Gogi way of communicating. Because at times, we do get frustrated, we're having a bad day and so forth, and then this is where you could actually tell them some of the tools that you use, or just remind them, right? But of course, don't yell at them when you're telling them that.
Well, and I think, I think our women, our women do that now. I think they're really good about doing that now, you know, talking, you know, maybe talking about, you know, having positive thoughts, or maybe you need like, you know, do your five-second light switch, you know, or whatever it is. I know that Rebecca is very good about reminding Michael about some of those things. So, I think we all, it's, it's just like if we were, as soon as we start associating with certain people, like, I have friends that have lived in California their whole life, but they were born in Kentucky. I don't know why they still have an accent, but they all do, and we can be with them for, you know, maybe one day, and we all sound like we're from Kentucky. So, we are, people have a tendency to gravitate and to pick up the language of other people. Um, you know, I grew up in South Phoenix, so a lot of my mannerisms or whatever are based on me being the only little white girl in the patio. So, we all have a tendency to speak a language that's similar, and I think, once it becomes a habit, like you stated, and once those, you know, pathways, the new pathways are kind of, you know, built and formed, then it's more natural that it's going to become part of, a way of life, just as Coach talks about. This is a culture. It's, it's a way of life, it's not just a program. So...
So, let, let me just tell you this. I was so numb to my circumstances after a while, seeing so much chaos, violent racial tension, uh, it became numb to me after a while, that my heart was no longer flesh. It, it literally turned to stone, guys. And I could not feel, and people would say, "How could you be so ruthless and cold?" And I said, "'Cause that's the way I've been treated. Why should I feel? It's just gonna hurt." So, the more that the knife dug into my heart, I couldn't feel it no more, because I got used to being hurt and hurt and hurt, or seeing this. So, with, with Gogi, it's like a patch, it's like a, a, it's like a brace, it's like a, like a crutch, until you can get healthy again. It's like doing all this, all this work. Because normally, when someone is going through their trauma, if someone's going through their problems in life, they got their hurt habits and hangups. And with Gogi, you could once again be reunified with the person that you once was or are seeking to be towards. And this is why I urge all Gogi women to be leaders and be a leading example to their men, and encourage them to be leaders themselves, and not to follow, uh, others, especially if it's leading them in the wrong direction. Because when they get out, they're gonna have to continue to be leaders for their family, for you, the children, or whoever is your family, and to be that example.
Good. Thank you. Okay, so, what advice do you have for those who are still incarcerated? What, you know, you've given a lot of advice, but what extra advice could you give for these wives to pass on to, to their loved ones?
Advice? I have to say, guys, I don't know if you, uh, how many, how many of you guys, first of all, I kind of gotta get a feel, a feel of this. How many of you guys have, is your loved one, your husband or boyfriend, are they all lifers, or it's just one or two?
Mine has, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
This is Rebecca. Michael has, and Michael has 10 years left.
Okay.
This is for him. He's been down for 18 years, and he's a lifer.
Okay. Got it.
My husband's a lifer also.
Okay, so...
And Monica?
You might...
Monica, and, uh, my husband actually has LWOP, but you know what? He's gonna get, he's coming home, I'm telling you.
There you go.
There you go, Monica.
We have things going. It's gonna happen.
It's gonna happen.
That's right.
The laws are changing all the time.
He's really, he met, he's just like you. I mean, he facilitates, he's a leader, and, um, it's really good. And me being part of it really helps him be stronger, even though he's, was already strong. So, I know firsthand that, you know, he loves the fact that I'm involved, so, and all the other guys, that's one thing he said, that if you're a woman, you should be involved with the same thing, because that's something you can share, and it helps them have something, and they, and they feel stronger, and it really has helped our relationship a lot.
So, so, would, thank you. That's, that's, that's very profound. I mean, it's just like outstanding. Um, we need more men out here like that. So, you know, I pray and I hope that, that time comes where he's able to get out here and, and even help society as a whole. Um, now, what I'm gonna get at, guys, is, is this. Who knows about the Marcy Law?
I do.
Okay.
I don't.
I do. A little bit.
Okay.
Tell us about it.
Okay. So, the, the Marcy Law is basically something that happened to an innocent little girl, but they took it on, on lifers. So, now, uh, the Victims Rights Unit, uh, they, they basically, they go to the parole boards, and they contest on being paroled. So, and they feel that it's cruel and unusual punishment for someone to parole, or for them to continue to come. So, they come to an agreement that if the parole does have the authority now to deny more than five years and even up to 15 years. So, that's like... So that's like another life sentence. And this is in California, though. So the thing is, is, is this, guys, when I was in there, I never used a cell phone. My mom was dying. She, she was dying, and I really wanted to use the cell phone. And people told me, "Use it," and I didn't. I'm not telling you what to do, but I could tell you this much, it's like Russian roulette. They get caught, the odds are when they go in front of the parole board, the Marcy Law is gonna take effect. It used to be five years was the highest, it's fifteen now. So this is Russian roulette, it is serious, and it is crucial, and it is vital to write letters and be safe about it, communicate that way, get the mind juggling. Anytime when you write, you're connecting from your fingertips all the way to your heart, to your mind, your soul, to your ever being. And this gets your, your mind generating. Yes, it costs stamps and everything else, but it's gonna cost more if you're illegally doing some of these acts. And my, my, my point in case on all this, guys, is this. I was confined for almost twenty-five years, right? Since the age of sixteen, I got out at the, at the age of, um, forty-two, guys. So almost a, almost a quarter of a century, right? I got locked up, I got locked up in, in, in March, I paroled in January. So just a couple of months away. But nevertheless, it felt longer than that, it felt like an eternity that was never gonna end, I feel like I was in a Bermuda Triangle, and there was just so much that was going on. And I was always looking for an answer, and it seemed like, could never find the answer, because anything I tried did not work. But GOGI did help me out tremendously, but I still had to put in a lot of work, it just didn't happen by itself. I had to actually put work in, it's just like in, in the Bible, it talks about works without faith is dead, right?
Faith without works is dead, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so the same metaphor, the same scripture. But my point in case to this is, I didn't know, I'm the, every drawing that I draw has a meaning to it. If you do read The Coat of Arms, I re- read it, 'cause it talks about the eagle that I was talking about. But now going back to the butterflies that she likes, I could tell you this much. That, that person in that, that picture, yes, was me with hair at one time, and, and that was me in the cocoon. I was going through a struggle. Never did I know that I was supposed to be free. That I was try, I was supposed to be a hero and not a zero. But I had to dive in deep waters to fight and face my reality. But not only that, to dive in deep waters to unroot those weeds that were suffocating the very life and essence of life. The very things that were lying to me, the very seeds that turned my life in the wrong direction. And I had to have a new purpose, a new way, and a new direction in life. And I started, I unwed it, I unwed those weeds, and I put new ones. And with that, just like that cocoon, I, I wiggled and I broke out of there. And no longer was there any prejudice against them, no longer did it, did it matter about color, race, and no longer did it matter about status. I seen everything as beautiful as God intended me to see it. It was light, it wasn't black and white no more, it was colorful, like the color of the rainbows. And my skies were no longer black, they were blue. That, um, I leave this to say, guys, that I was, I was gonna get engaged with my junior high sweetheart. Um, a lot of stuff was going on, and she was trying so hard, so hard to get me out. But I wasn't doing crap at the time. She, and she, she checked me, she told me, "You know what? You gotta get in this, you gotta get in that, you gotta get in this." And I was like, "Man, I didn't wanna do all this work, it was just too damn much." And one day she told me, "You know what, James? I'm sick and tired of your crap." Goes, "You want everything in a civil pilot, it doesn't work like that." I read up and did a lot of research, and these are the conditions that most parole boards commissioners grant parole. You don't even come close to any of them. I'm tired of doing all this, right? She, she pretty much left me, right? And to this day, when I paroled, I showed her all the stuff that I did, but she kinda nged me there, right? And then when I met, when I met Coach, that was just like, that broke all the ice, and I literally, I literally worked on myself so hard, the very things that brought me to prison was the very issues that I, I addressed, the very issues that I made that connection with the commissioners to, to tell them, "Yes, I was at fault." And I could no longer blame anybody, the only thing I could do today is to prevent those, um, those issues from re-rising and correct them, and, uh, redirect them in the positive direction. So, my, my point in case with you guys is encourage your men to do the same. And if you can encourage them, pray for them. And, and if you can't pray for them, be that leading example for them. And that's about it, guys.
All right. Thank you very much. Those were all of the questions I have. Do any of you ladies have any questions for James?
You're like, "Hell no, thank God he shut up." I'm just joking, guys.
No, I wanna thank you because, um, you, you can, you see, you saw everything and you lived it from the inside, and you talking with us gave, definitely gave me some insight as to what I'm sure that my husband goes through, or went through. Um, and he still struggles, obviously, every day, but, um, just, you know, you think about the bumblebee and define odds, and you said something about hurt, hangups, and habits, and, and how to do things, and, um, those are good things, I think, to know. And, um, that, you know, he and I can talk about, and, you know, work through.
I just wanna point out, I just wanna point out, too, that James Paroled GP, okay, which, I'm going to say that was, that was enlightening for me, because obviously, you know, I, my, my ex-husband is, um, is S and Y. So that's all I, so I, I think we, depending on what side you're on, sometimes you, you don't understand the other side, and so obviously, my thinking is, anybody that's GP is still a thug, still gang-related, they're never gonna get paroled. And that was my ignorance, that was my uneducated ignorance. And through this journey I have, I've, I've learned that that's not the case. That somebody can be GP and, and not be gang-related or whatever, and, and do what's right and get out. So, i- it's, for me, and talking to James, that was very enlightening, very helpful for me. And I think it's something that can actually bring us as wives together, too, so that there isn't so much division.
I'm actually getting chills, guys. I feel chills across my body, my hair, my hairs on my forearms are rising. And the only reason I say that is because, what's a crutch? A crutch is something we continue to use excuses, we continue to walk through. Believe me, I've threw every excuse you can to continue to continue the same behavior. I used all the prison politics, I used everything. Yes, it does exist, yes, but when people see that you're serious, after a while, they'll test you. But the thing is, you gotta be the bigger person at times, and you gotta show them that you're serious. And after a while, they see that you're serious, now I'm not talking about being violent, I'm talking about almost like being Gandhi, so to speak, but not that damn innocent, right? Uh, they start, they start respecting you because it's hard to be like that, under the circumstances. And that's how it was for me, right? And I encourage you guys, if, if you, if you live in California, or you're, there's ever a lifer meeting, I encourage you to ask questions, because you're gonna see thousands of lifers that are out today. And I'll tell you this much, seventy-five percent of them are GP.
Yes.
Seventy-five percent.
James, I wanna thank you because, um, my husband introduced me to GOGI. And, um, he's GP level four, and he's, you, you talked about the politics and all that, he's level four. Um, there's things going on, so he's positioned himself in the yard that everybody, everybody is going to him now as educator. He started, he started a GOGI group in there, um, on his own, uh, with, uh, with the sponsor of one of his teachers, with three other men. And, um, they have twenty men right now going, doing the GOGI in there. By hearing you, that you're out here, you're doing what you're doing, his goal is to get out here and teach other men. Um, he's using me as a tool as well, because I, I, I'm in the substance abuse, I'm working at a transitional home. So I'm trying, I was talking to Tim, I'm trying to integrate these in the transitional home as well, because they need help out here, you know, some of these lifers forget where they're coming from, all the hard work they did. Not all of them, but there is those few that do forget what helped them come back home. And, um, he's, I thank you for that, I mean, just because you, you enlightening me on, 'cause sometimes I worry about him, is like, I know what I'm doing, but I have to position myself like this, because if I don't, then they're gonna ask me to do things. And I'm like, "Okay, you know what you gotta do, you're the one that has to live the life, I don't."
Yeah.
But he educates other men, um, no races, no color, no color lines, no nothing, and I, I see him as like, "Okay, you're, you know, you're, you know, I grew up as a homegirl." And it's like, I look at him and I, he, he wows me, because, just like you said, it's tough living in, I cannot imagine what he goes through.
Look, I've actually, you could tell a person by their fruits, right? You know they're BSing, you know they're sincere. I, I was approached by shot callers, and they, and they, and they told me, "James, if, if you don't do this, this is gonna happen."
Mm-hmm.
And I remember Coach's words, right? "You're never gonna change nothing if you never do something new."
Exactly.
And I, and I just basically told them, "I, I have a family, I have this and this and this and that, and I wanna see them, and this is what I'm, I do." And they just told, told me, "You've been warned," right? And I thought, you know, I was gonna walk in the yard and I was gonna get stabbed.
Mm-hmm.
Many times I felt that. But after they started seeing that I was serious, they left alone. Because I was, you know, by example, I was like a beacon of light, not many people could do this. And then it started a trend, it started a trend, more people were doing it. And that's just, this is why I'm encouraging you guys, if there's ever a barbecue lifer, uh, um, gathering, they had one this Saturday, I would like you to go out there, because they're gonna tell you the same thing. They gone through all these trials, some men served up to forty years. I've had a friend by the name of Jimmy Sheraton, uh, excuse me, I kinda getting a little emotional. He paroled, he, he was my, uh, jailhouse rock lawyer, he was trying to get me out another way, but it didn't work. Um, he taught me how to drive. I, I didn't know how to drive. He, he helped me get my driver's license. He passed away, but, he passed away a free man, happy, he died in his sleep, happy. He was out for about three years. And my gratitude goes out to him, because he was a facilitator for other programs, and he was a leader, leading, leading example for me, and inspiration, motivation. And there's many people out there, from Coach Taylor to all you guys, you guys could make the difference. And that's why it's important to let your men know, let them shine, they can make the difference, too. And there's, and there's many testimonies, and those testimonies are the men that are out today. And they're leading examples for GOGI, they're leading examples for whatever they believe in, because they made that difference and they're out. Because I could truly attest and tell you that there has been some lifers that I've done time with that are back. They got out and they went back. Why? Because they were not continuing to refining themselves and working on themselves. They let their, their old, uh, core issues rise up, and they took flight. Because they were not guarding themselves or working on themselves. They still had all that frustrations, hangups, and resentments, and it resurfaced its ugly head, and it acted out. And now they're facing the parole board all over again. So this is why it's very important that the men of GOGI, the wives, and everybody works on themselves. I don't know if that makes sense to you guys.
Well, it makes sense.
It does.
Kind of drives home the point that we've all been saying, you know, it, it's great that GOGI's in the prisons, and we're gonna keep pushing it in the prisons. We need to get it on every yard and every prison in the state of California and across the US. However, for me, I feel it is absolutely vital, not only that the women learn it for their men, but that the women learn it for themselves and to also lead in our community. Because we need...
Women, children.
We need, absolutely, and we, when these guys parole, whether they be lifers, whether they be guys that are doing a nickel here, going back, another nickel here, the revolving door guys, we need it in the transitional housing units, because these guys, let's say they're alcoholics and they're doing AA inside, they come out, they, they have fifty million AA meetings they can go to, where people understand their situation and they can go. There's not one GOGI group out here that a guy can go to. So just like you guys said, they're, they're out here, they're dropped into a society that doesn't know them, that's already judging them, and they don't have their comrades in arms anymore. They need to have a place to go to continue working on themselves, so they don't slip backwards. And it's why we need to get our GOGI groups going in the transitional housing. Um, it's very important. The next guest speaker we're gonna have that's gonna come on is another gentleman who basically just got his, got his degree and is now licensed in Riverside as a peer coach. There's actually a non-GOGI certification you can get, and he now can use his GOGI certification in a, in, in a professional way to push GOGI in the community, and he's starting with the gang, the gang areas. And he's going to work with us to help get GOGI pushed and help us follow his steps to get certified, so that we can be peer coaches and everything else. So GOGI becomes an actual, um, that's an actual certification that we can get. So we have these guys that are coming out, and we need to add to that, but we need to have a base first. We need the women, we need us to get in here and dig the trenches and do the work, so when our guys get out, they can follow our lead and, and help us push it. And then we can also move on to get it with the kids. You know, like I said, we need to get it into the, you know, the at-risk youth groups. And then we need to get it into the high schools, and we need it to get into the grammar schools, and we need to get it all the way to the preschool, so nobody ever becomes an at-risk youth. Then they don't become somebody who's in prison. And then guess what, we win because the CDCR doesn't have anybody to lock up anymore. So everything that is going on out here, our guys can't help us with right now. We need to be the ones that go out there, we need to be the soldiers. We have that loud voice, you know, and, and I'm a firm believer in that. So by us preparing our guys now, once they get out, they're gonna be able to be a James. You know, to be able to be, you know, a James Washington, be able to be all of these lifers that I see that are doing such good works. So, James, thank you very much.
Sure.
Bottom of my heart.
Thank you, guys.
And we really, really appreciate it. And you know what, and...
Thank you, James.
You know, I got the big, the big stick with the, with the little, what's the round thing on the end of it, where I can like loop his neck in. I'm gonna talk him into coming into some of our meetings, and you know, and he'll be around to support him. We're gonna have him back to basically give his testimonial. Um, so, you know, look for more, look for more of James, but James, thank you so much.
You guys are...
Everybody give him a hand, thank you, James, we appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
Ladies, before we let, before, wait, it's so early, bro, hold on, before we let you go, I'm sorry, does anybody else have any questions for him?
I, I have...
Thank you, I was... I was just wondering what some of the, some of the requirements are that the parole board is looking for for when the guys go up in front of them.
Okay.
If you know any.
Yes, yes, it, it all depends case by case, it's on a case-in-case-by scenario. So, so basically, what was their sentence, has a lot to do with it. Uh, was it, was it a, uh, you know, was there love involved, was it a robbery, was it gang violence? All this has to do something with it. Was it, uh, how, how did it lead you to the crime? What was pushing you to do this, right? 'Cause you could've always just said no and turned around, right? So there was type of circumstances, so the very circumstances that brought you to prison are the very circumstances that had to be addressed. For me, I, I had to learn that I had, I had codependency issues, I had rejection issues, I had abandonment issues, I had trust issues, there were so many issues that the parole board kept denying me. "You're denied two years, you're denied four years, you're denied this, you're denied that," right? "Come back, come back, come back." So the thing was, was that they literally wanted to see that I got it. They wanted to see this individual that parole, I mean, this individual that got confined was gonna parole a better person than the person that actually entered the correctional system. And was able to articulate and address each and every issue, and at the same time come around and said, "This is how I could've prevented..." this is how I could've prevented, and if given the opportunity, this is how I'm gonna connect with you commissioners and let you know, this is my plan to not redo what I did. So basically, working on the very issues that brought them to prison and preventing them once they parole, this is what they wanna know. And a lot, a lot of, if it's anger management, it's anger management, if, if, if it's alcohol, AA, right? And more, GOGI just about covers just about every aspect you could think about.
Awesome. Yes, and just so you guys know, yeah, the anger management um, certificate course that we have is excellent. And that is the newest um, certificate course that's being given out with, along with the How to GOGI books um, into the prisons that have the grants. Um, they're getting ready to send out um, a, a bunch more of them. And, and so you see those, those are gonna be, and also, you know, they're, they're on the website. But the other certificate course, the one before that, also covers a wide variety of items. And you can work that book by choosing which of the, I think there's gotta be like ten different issues that are listed, and the guys can choose which one they're dealing with, whether it be alcoholism, whether it be violence, um, whether it be any kind of an addiction. So they can work that book, that one book, you can be worked with that item that they have in mind, whatever it is they're struggling with. So that book basically can walk you through that scenario with ten different, ten different issues. So it's all in, it's all in the mindset and, and the issues that these guys have, but they're really, really good. So I encourage everybody to
So keep in mind, keep in mind, a lot, a lot of the lifers will bring certificates in front of the parole board, but their response once the commissioner asks them, what's this about? Ah, 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 that's the response, ah, 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 ah. And that alone will, will be no good on their part.
Yeah.
Uh, one, I had went in front of them, they said, hey, you got like five uh, parenting certificates here, you don't, you're not even a father, you have no kids. They said, why'd you do this? And I, and I basically told them, because I wanted to see where I went wrong as a child, and I wanted to see where my parents went wrong as parents, because I don't want these things to repeat into the children that I have once I'm paroled, the family I have. I wanted to be able to prevent any of this to happen and have the actual skills and tools to be the best father I can be.
That's awesome.
Dude, write that down, isn't that gold? He told me that I got shivered, he told me that, because I never would've thought
I just did too, yeah.
I mean, it makes sense, doesn't it? Yeah.
Their jaws dropped, and even a couple, a couple, uh, they used, when I was going, it was three commissioners. And one started crying and the other one was fighting and then finally gave in, the other one just kept looking at me with the evil eye. Like, I don't, I wanna be there, I wanna Let me ask a couple more questions, I, I'm not convinced yet.
Right. You know what, but see, that, you can't make up that kind of stuff. You can't, you couldn't make, make that up, that comes from the heart. So for James to say that, you know, that's, that's an answer from the heart. Because only somebody that would actually feel that and have been in that situation would be able to come up with a response like that. So, you know, it, it shows that he was very truly honest in, in his decisions. And I will attest to something that he did say. Corey told me, because Corey was found suitable in twenty sixteen and the governor took his date. But he did say that he had a plethora of certificates. And they will just grab one from the pile and they would, they will ask you, what is this one? Why did you take it? What is it about? What did you learn? How have you applied it? And Corey said, if you do not know inside and out and have your answers ready and be really sincere in knowing this information, then that's it. If you mess up once, then they're gonna think, okay, well, if he didn't really pay attention to that class, how many more of these fifty certificates are gonna be the same? So then they start to question all of them. So it is very important that these guys be on it and they know everything, they're, and they're able to explain convincingly and with, with truth and heart, how that affected them and, and how that changed them. Or they're just gonna
And you know
certificates.
Another thing too, is we, as human beings, we tend to rationalize, minimize, and totally avoid our responsibility, and we're in total denial. For a long time, it was hard for me to admit that it wasn't an accident. It was hard for me to admit that I caused this and I could've said no, but I did pull the trigger, right? And once they started seeing the sincerity, the honesty, they said, yes, this man is no longer sugarcoating, he's no longer telling fibs, he's taking responsibility. And he's also showing all this stuff that he is doing to benefit the, the, the society of prison. And when he becomes uh, free as a parolee, that he's gonna be a productive uh, citizen of society as well. And I had commissioners come after I was found suitable and tell me this very thing. They said, we have many that come in here, but many cannot articulate like you did, James. And the only reason you were able to articulate is you did the work that you needed to do. And you touched my heart, and I would have no problem you living next to me, because I know you're a changed person.
That's awesome. Yeah.
And when they were telling, they were telling me this, they were like all teary-eyed, and, and I was just all gugugaga because I was, when I heard, when I heard you're found for suitable for parole, you're no longer a, a threat to society and all this, because I'm used to hearing the opposite. I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know what was going on. My attorney, uh, he, he nudged me, he says, you hear that? You got found suitable. Oh my God, it was like a waterfall of tears, I just couldn't stop crying. And I cried for about almost two weeks.
And all of those guys who told you, because James was telling me that these guys would mock him, you're never gonna get out, you're doing all this they're, you're spinning your wheels, it's not gonna happen, and then tell them what happened when you were found suitable, who came to you?
Yeah, they were saying you're a political prisoner, they're not gonna let you out, come on, you're wasting your time. Uh, come on, and this and this and that, you're just spinning your wheels. So when I was found suitable, the ones that were mocking me were the very ones asking me for help, what can I do?
Yep.
Ain't got trumping.
And what did he say? He said, you know, he, you know, you told them exactly what they could do, and you know what? James Washington told me the same thing, that they, people will come to him and ask him. And James basically told them, you need GOGI, you need GOGI. And, you know, there's a lot of different groups and stuff out there, but these guys that people made fun of are now the guys that they're coming to, just like some of your husbands, who are making that hard decision. GP, making that hard decision. Not everybody that turns their back on gangs or whatever are gonna get stabbed. I figured that was what happened, you got stabbed, there was no choice. But so there's a choice, there's an absolute choice. And these guys are like now standing pillars within that community and standing up for things. And as soon as somebody sees one person stand up, that's all it takes. That's all it takes. Everybody will gravitate towards that. And we all know how bullies are, because I'm sorry, no offense to anybody, but that's all who these gang, that these gangbusters are all up in here trying to be a shock caller, whatever, they're bullies. And they bully people around, hey, James, you're either gonna do this or you're gonna get this. That's being a bully. And what happens to bullies? People stand up to bullies, there gets to be so many of them that the bullies aren't bullies anymore, because they don't, they don't, they don't have, you know, they don't have any juice. So everybody just needs to start standing up and people will follow. And, and I just, I mean, I'm so, I'm totally impressed. You know, I'm not gonna feed into James's fat head already, but for me, it's an honor to meet guys like that. I love
She called me a cute ball. Because I've got no hair.
What?
And she said, she also said, she also said I look like a cheetah pet.
I did not say that, you were just making stuff up now, whatever. But the bottom, the bottom line is, I have grown very fond, I'm sorry, lifers that get out, you know, there are some that are, that are, you know, that have issues that, that get out or they go back, but I'm gonna tell you, that's a, those are guys with character. Those guys have gone through so much garbage and seen so much badness and worked on themselves so hard that once they get out, these guys could, should, these guys should be numb. There should be nothing left of their soul, there should be nothing left of their heart from everything they've seen inside. But these end up being some of the most loving, caring guys that I've ever met. And, and it's awesome.
Don't get me wrong, don't get me wrong, I'm tested out here, and I had to continue,
I'm sure.
I had to continue to write, remind myself that my worst day out here was my best day in prison. I am free and I am, I, I'm no longer a slave to the politics, to the uh, atmosphere. I am as free as can be, right? I'm still on parole, but I'll be off next year. I had to do seven years, guys. I had to do seven years. Most, everybody does up to three to two and, or five at the most. I had to do seven. Um, but
But that seven's almost up though, right? Seven's almost up.
Yeah, next year, uh, January. But this is what I'm gonna tell you guys. I had a couple of friends that I had to coach out here. The very issues that brought them to prison, and I'm talking about, they killed another guy for a girl. They got jealous, the rage came up, and they just took out this person and they were serving a fifteen to life sentence, right? Or they stabbed him. Well, they're out here and those emotions are still coming up. And guess what? They beat up the girl, girlfriend Sancho, Tanto, Rancho Comacho, right? She was cheating on him. And guess what? They pressed charges on him, so now he's sitting in there. And then you have, you have other guys that literally didn't like the way someone approached them, and they took flight on them. See, and this is the importance, sometimes you can get out of prison, but could you get the prison out of you? Are you institutionalized? Are you still washing your clothes in the shower? Are you still washing in the toilet? Are you still doing that? Because we no longer have to do that, we don't have to do that stuff. We have to make that change, and the only way you're gonna be able to make that change is to continue to work on yourself. And if you're not working on yourself, it's gonna show and it's gonna expose its ugly head. And that's why we, we gotta take off the mask and, and be the real person that we are. And stop being a zero and become a hero. Dive in deep waters, face yourself, and become a better person. I encourage you all to read the Code of Arms, what it means, what it represents, because it talks about exactly what I'm talking about, guys.
And I think that's a good point James made, because not everybody that goes to prison, um, like a lot of our guys, there's addiction problems, okay? Drugs kind of led to them doing whatever they did. And, and there, we got a lot of addicts that are still inside. A lot of these guys, let's take
Oh, they don't have a problem, they, they're, they don't have a problem according to them.
Well, right, but so when these guys get out, let's say, you know, like take, take Ernie, you guys, some of you guys met Ernie, you watched the interview that I did with Ernie and everything. Ernie never had a drug problem, okay? Ernie got seventy-five to life, and Ernie served twenty-eight, got out. But what, what I'm saying is, Ernie never had a drug issue, his addiction was violence. It was violence. And so when he finally got out, he's a GOGI man, he was a facilitator in CCI. He is a changed person, and he's very quiet now, if you, he's a very reserved person. And it would be, it's very hard for me to look at Ernie and think of the man that he was when he committed his crime. However, when he's at, when he got out, and um, he's best friends with my ex. And I keep up with Ernie, and I remember one time, Ernie doesn't say much, but when Ernie talks, you, you listen, because you know it's, it's something profound, right? He texts me and he said, you know what, Tamara? He's like, I love God. He goes, I love God with all my heart. He said, but I am being tested on a daily basis. And his test, which might seem silly, was being on the trolley here in San Diego. And the trolley is basically the, the bus that they run. Being on that bus and having people bump into him, having people not saying, excuse me, having people disrespect him, having people, you know, all of those things that people knew better than to do inside, because I'm sorry, the, the loyalty, the respect, the, the way you handle yourself on the inside, there's a code of conduct that out here, there's no code of conduct. People are gonna jump on you and step on you, spit on you, no one is gonna say they're sorry, they're gonna end up blaming you. So for Ernie, it was a daily battle not to lose it on somebody that bumped into him and did not say, excuse me. And for him, that was the biggest trial he had. And he, he had to deal with that for over a year, because he didn't have any other way of getting to work. And he would tell me, it is so, he would pray and pray, doesn't care about the drugs, nothing else, that was his issue. And he still has to deal with it, thankfully, he's got a car now. But you see, it's, everybody has a different, a different battle. Everybody has a different war they're waging within themselves, even when they get out. So these guys aren't gonna be perfect. Because just like the guy who beat up the, the, the Sancho, there's no women in prison. You're not here, you're not seeing somebody cheat on you, or you're not, you don't have access to that. So there's things that are taken out of the equation that all of a sudden they're out, now that's in the equation again. Now they're having to deal with something they never had to deal with for fifteen, twenty years. So they need to make sure that they're continuing to work on themselves, and if we're there to support them, it's gonna be that much better.
And the commissioners wanna know, they're gonna sign your parole papers that you have addressed this. It's like an onion, it has many layers, right? And it's gonna make you cry, but you need to address it. And if you don't address it, it's gonna address itself out here and it's gonna continue to do that vicious cycle of violence.
Yeah.
And it's gonna, it's gonna lead you right back. And this is where the layers of work come in. You're gonna dig deep and you're gonna work on yourselves. And even for you guys, guys, uh, this is working on you too as well. Doing the GOGI work, you'll see some of the stuff, relate to some of the stuff that's being said and say, you know what? I'm not even locked up, and I feel what they're saying
Oh, yeah.
in these books.
Don't we feel that every week? We do two meetings a week.
Yep.
And we all sit there and we're like, you know, sometimes we cry, but there's always that, you know, there's, there's that aha moment for us. I mean, you know, I know I'm a lovely, wonderful, sweet person all the time, but it even helps me. It is, it's very No, but it's, it's very, it's helpful, and it hasn't not drawn us, we're all strangers. As women here, we're all strangers. It, it's, we're very close now. You know, and so it, it's a, it's a bonding thing. GOGI, GOGI is bonding. It bonds everybody, we all speak the same language and everything else, so. Okay, we're moving, coming up on nine thirty, and I don't wanna run us over.
You've been talking a lot.
Yeah.
All right.
I don't want, thank you, James, again, we really appreciate it, James will be back.
Okay, I will, I promise.
Thank you.
Uh, you guys, you have a good night and enjoy the rest of your evening and night.
Thank you, James.
Thank you, James.
Thank you, the night.
Okay.
Good night.
Thank you.
Bye, bye, bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Thank you, guys. Let's, let's do, um, let's do our, uh, I don't have my GOGI pledge in front of me, but let's, let's do our one, two, three. Oh, you do? Okay, let's do that, you know, Monica, can you?
I do it by heart, don't you know it by heart by now?
Monica, Monica, can you go ahead and lead us in the pledge, please? I think I know the last, I think I know the last part.
Pretend like I don't know it now.
You don't have to pretend like you don't know it, psycho. Do you have it?
Yeah, of course I have it.
Okay. Well, I could find it too, if I had that much time.
May our commitment, here, I'll, I'll do it off the top of my head, may our commitment
May our commitment.
May our commitment.
To the study of GOGI.
To the study of GOGI. Study of GOGI.
Grant us the joy.
Grant us the joy.
Of giving and receiving.
See, I do know it, of giving and receiving.
So that our inner, wait, wait, wait. So that our inner peace
So that our inner peace
So that our inner peace
May be of maximum service.
Maybe of maximum
Maybe of maximum service.
To those we love.
To those we love.
To those we love.
And infinite others.
And infinite others. Awesome, okay, we're gonna do one, two, three, GOGI for life, ready? One, two, three, GOGI for life.
GOGI for life.
All right, thank you, ladies, have a good evening, see you on the board.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.